I'd like to pull the meeting to order. If we could please take a moment of silence. Please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, to Harold Doons, the Suburban Trends, the Record, the Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cable Vision of Warwick, and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Stevenson? Mr. Conklin?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mr. Greeno?
Mrs. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
Mr. Stillman?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer? Okay. I'm moved to go into executive session at 6:38 for the purpose of conducting contract negotiations, grievances, and personnel for a period of 90 minutes. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It says a roll call, do you think?
It's after a program.
So we'll be back in...
90 minutes.
90 minutes. Francisco, could you do roll call, please?
Mr. Conklin?
Here.
Mr. Stillman?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Here.
...our September meeting. We're going to go a little bit out of order because we do have a late start tonight and we do have school tomorrow. So we're going to welcome Gabriela Meza. School year. I think you'll find we're a convating group. We, with who you're here before, feel free to leave after you make your report tomorrow as a school day.
Thank you. My name's Gabriela Meza. I'm a senior at West Milford High School, and I'm also the president of our student council. So just to offer some things, we will have our search for contestants for math, English, and science coming up. Each week various colleges will be coming to the high school to meet students, sign up, so they can be invited to this. We were excited to hold our first pep rally next Friday. On September 8th, our back-to-school night was well-attended. Our March even and tour athletics are off to a good start.
I'm sorry, is your microphone on?
I'm holding it down.
No, you just press it. You just press it.
It's late in a little.
Mid-time.
You're good.
You're good.
Can I just say, oh my god.
No. (laughter)
He's usually very nice. I don't know why he's picking on you.[243.42][243.42](laughter)
The March even hosted their first-ever competition at West Milford High School. The student council's annual fundraiser chosen by the president. We are also finalizing all the details for the yearly spring spectacular on October 29th. We hope to have all information posted on the district website by the end of the week. That concludes our report.
Thank you.
It gets easier every month. Next, we're going to go a little bit out of order here. We have our College Board National Recognition Program. So every year, the College Board awards over 62,000 students from across the country with academic honors from the College Board National Recognition Programs for excelling in their classroom and on college board assessments. More than 180,000 students from all 50 states were eligible to apply for the College Board National Recognition Program, which grants students with academic honors that can be included on college and scholarship applications. This year, from West Milford High School, we... Five juniors and two seniors. Our juniors, congratulations to Ava Murphy, Brandon Spleet, Colin Aw... Cassidy Cuns, Maxine Cuns, and Erin Henigan. Congratulations to all students for being here. Next up is our HIB/ITP information for period number two. That's January 1st of 2022 through the end of June, June 30th. So we report this twice a year to the department through the NJADOE homeroom. These are our investigations, trainings, and programs that we offer at all of our schools as well as district-wide. So we report out to the board twice a year, and then I upload the report the day after the board meeting. So aptuous school, remember, this is last spring. We had one HIV case investigated, and it was affirmed as HIV by the Board of Ed. We had 10 total trainings in that half-year period. Maple Road had zero HIV investigations, five trainings, seven training programs total. Upper Greenwood Lake had zero HIV investigations, five trainings, and five programs. Westbrook had one HIV investigation, and it was affirmed by the BOE as bullying, 11 trainings, and 11 total programs. Mackeyville had six investigations, four were HIV, two were not, one training, and five programs. And West Milford High School had eight investigations, six were affirmed as HIV, two were not, four trainings, and one program at the high school. So the district total for the last five months of the school year were 18 investigations, 12 were affirmed as HIV, six were not. This will be uploaded to the department tomorrow.
Can you go back one second? How many programs does the high school have? I'm sorry, Ms. Dwyer.
High school had four trainings and one program. (inaudible) Ryan's story. And this did not make my report, but I will announce it. So there's... Projects. Six people, six guidance councils from across the entire nation are selected to work. And this year, one of those candidates was selected was our very own Dana Lambert, guided council of West Milford High School. So that's out of the whole nation, there are 12 people in this group, six are selected for two-year terms, and one of them is from a high school. So congratulations to Miss Lambert. This is a wonderful resource for our students, our coaches, and our parents. This is the nationwide group that works with the NCAA.
Congratulations to Mrs. Lockwood.
Absolutely. We do have a brief PowerPoint presentation that's on the tables in the back. You're going to put up in the corner behind us, so if you want, just gently move over. All right, we begin Board of Ed, members of this community. This is our interim report. This is something we've been promising all along. So the restructuring committee, we announced it last spring in April, we introduced the committee, we formed five different subcommittees to help us out. We invited parents. Website now, all our subcommittee meetings at net or on our website. Last month, Dr. Haber presented his reports to the Board of Ed at the meeting, those are all on our website. And at that same meeting, the board approved a revision study by a person by Ross Haber. So he's working on that now. We cannot have that report yet. We hope to have it before the next Board of Ed meeting. The interim report is right now. We are going to continue our subcommittee meetings over the next few weeks into September into October, and we will have a recommendation to the Board of Ed by the end of calendar year 2022, either November or December. So why do we start this? The kindergarten classes have averaged about 210 students for the past six years. Those of you who went to West Milford, you may have graduated, it's just nearly 400. So the district's been roughly cut and capped from a 12-hour class. So 13 grades of 400-ish, where eventually we're going to be having... Four to offer each school plus 100 a class. Right now, appear to be answers no, but part of a massive increase in K age if you are not in this case. So this is a district enrollment. We look back about 20 years. This is the actual, and this is the projected here that we have from Dr. Haber. What's the total line of best fit in there is pretty much upper left to lower right. It will stabilize out in this area here as a larger grade, which are in high school now graduating this year. But it will stabilize at around 25, maybe 26. You can see our elementary enrollment. We're averaging under 210 per class. We just made 200 last week in kindergarten, but as you can see, there's not a truly large class in that mix. High school, middle school, high school, they're a little bit larger. You can see the drop off between the sixth and fifth grade. That seems to be where the cutoff is now. Again, every year, one of these classes graduates, and they replace one of these classes. So you see the natural attrition when you graduate more seniors than you replace them in the world. So to me, the path is very, sort of trend is very obvious. You just look at it. So next step, we did apply for some... We sent them in a couple weeks ago. We hope to hear before the end of 2022. They don't see the exact date when they're going to... You have to kind of wait for these great notices to go out. But as part of the grant, the district included a plan of action to stabilize the planning, and this is part of it, given from six elementary supply. Our final subcommittee meeting, we're going to have it in October, and we'll be discussing your previous to this, the early meetings, we discussed sort of every scenario, but we did think, well, we brainstormed everything. Now we are going to focus more on Westbrook school option. We'll continue to post everything on our website. And our final report, cutting page, will be about it before the end of the calendar year. Any board members have any questions?
Thank you. I think the community needs to know specifically. I have questions for each administrator, and I think that by answering these questions, the community will understand more of why we're doing this. First of all, for Barbara, you know, what are the financial benefits to this? For you, Dr. Anamo, what's the ultimate goal for this? And will this move improve our overall education and our reputation as a district? Dan, where's Mr. Novak? Oh, there you are, Dan. What will be the effects on students being moved out of Westbrook? Will there be plans in place to adjust these, to adjust these students to their new environment? I think, you know, this should be part of the plan. These questions have to be answered. So I would like to, if you could each respond?
Sure. So your question to me was, we will make the district better.
Yes.
Right now, we have, I don't think it will change the academics because our students get taught in Westbrook, the same as PK, the same as Marshall Hill. Our curriculum would not change. Our teaching staff largely would not change. It's been the same people. I think where you might see some advantages is right now, we have a, we have certain grades in certain schools throughout the district. If you look at the enrollment report, where there's 22 students and there's one teacher, one section, and those students go from kindergarten to fifth grade with the same group of 20 students. So sometimes by the upper elementary grades, there's a little bit of friction, less social opportunities. That you would not have any single section grades. You have at least two in every school, in every grade, in some cases three. So each... Collaborate with, I think, the social-emotional piece. We've talked about that for a while, with students, giving them a slightly larger social circle in their elementary school. I mean, they're here for six years. I think that can only be helpful. We've heard a lot, I've heard negative feedback from parents who they want a second section open so they can split some students apart, but there's 21 students in the grade, so we can't open a second section. So head in, you know, 12 students to that grade, now you have two classes, and it's a little bit better for the students.
Dan?
We're going in order.
Oh. Not ready.
So I, I think, you know, to be just, you know, pretty simple in the answer, absolutely yes. I think it's more than just an answer that I can answer. I think the staff needs to be involved in what that process would be. We've already brainstormed with administrators and... Some schools have things called the moving up ceremony, where the, you know, a kindergarten class would go and experience what it's like to be a first grader. Opportunity, possibly, to have a, you know, experience for students who are, you know, in this process getting...
Assigned.
Reassigned to. But again, those are all conversations very early, I think, to have those conversations. But those are planned to replace to...
But we're thinking that.
I think it's, it needs to be a, it needs to be a community discussion, it needs to be staff members. Because it's not just students who are moving, it's teachers who are moving also. So I think it's a big discussion. I think it's a great question. Just at this time, there's no definitive plan. We've talked about, and budget cuts over the past few years, our Project Adventure program has seen some cuts because we've had less phys ed teachers in the, in the schools. Right now, Project Adventure is one of our biggest sources of social-emotional learning and team building and that sort of thing. So one of the discussions that we've been having is to, you know, increase that amount of Project Adventure in the schools for next year, even if it's for a one-year or two-year thing while, you know, while schools, you know, readjust. Be, you know, probably going to be on my agenda for the final committee when we discuss about it.
I just want to see the kids. I just want to make sure they're okay.
Sure.
Okay. Liz?
Sure. Is, you know, I think I've explained to the board, and I believe the public, and through our committee meetings, that the IEPs of students with special needs still have to be delivered and implemented. So I just want to assure everyone that no matter where they are, what the IEP looks like, that's going to still have to be followed. You know, it is a legal document. That being said, though, your question about how will it benefit students, or how will it benefit us to come into a school, which at the last board meeting, the presentation identified Westbrook being that building. Well, one, we said that it would be a cost savings because you would not be paying for the lease of Highlander Academy. The other benefit is that you're still going to give those students a therapeutic-type placement in an off-site location, even though it's one of our school buildings, it's still not the high school building. You will still, as a board, as a board, you will continue to save out of district dollars because those students will be serviced in West Milford instead of having to go out Mr. Novak was saying about involving stakeholders as far as the staff and the kids. I've had conversations with both Highlander Academy... If it would be that it's on our own, you know, land or our own building, so we then have the ability to plan for and improve on certain things that we did, were out of our control when you're leasing a facility from a building. So that's the part where they will be a part of the planning and determine what else they need. So for instance, I know the therapy space right now at Highlander Academy is a shared, the two social workers have a shared space. So if students go to get counsel by one or the other, it's in the same room. Obviously, one of the recommendations is they would really benefit from having their own separate spaces. So things like that. But I do think the Special Services Committee is still going to be meeting in October. That would be further discussed as far as the other benefits go. And then I do think the academy staff should be involved in the students.
All right. So I don't look at it from financial benefits. I look at it from financial necessity. You have no other way of being able to... Something to make it more efficient, more cost-effective. If you start just cutting programs, there's nothing... So I think that consolidating your buildings and repurposing them for programs that could be very costly is a necessity, but it'd also be beneficial for the community at large. We want to try to make things better, and with the money that we've already lost and was projected, we lost over the next three years while S2 is still being implemented. The impact is great, and, you know, I think our, our goal administratively is to try to make that impact not be felt in the student body. Thanks. I hope... For, that's what I'm hoping. So, thank you. I have a question now.
Hey, you had a question about Anamo?
Yeah, thanks. I see in the next steps that the subcommittee meetings are going to be held in September and October. I know it was an idea, and I really liked it for someone else, and I'm wondering if it's possible to bring all the committees together, similar to, you know, when we had meetings at Mackeyville, and each subcommittee could come in and say, this is what we talked about, and this is what we thought, and everybody could see what all the work was on this, because even as a board member, there were a lot of discussions that, you know, I'm only on one committee.
It's really a potential issue. We'd be limited to four board members. I believe we'd be limited to four board members a committee.
Well... What was the meeting with Kathy Helala?
Right.
What was that called?
The Strategic Plan.
Of course, that's what I...
So you have an extra board meeting where...
All I'm saying is I just see a lot of benefit if I could hear and you could hear what we talked about, and we can all come together, rather than there be all these separate committees that I don't know, you know, and you don't know what was at my, you know. I just think it's a good idea. I really liked it. And yes, I know that only four of us are allowed to be in one place all the time.
Unless we act as a, as a meeting.
Unless you're all invited to come along. I just want to hear, you know, I want as much information as possible before it goes through, that's my purpose. Thank you.
Courtney, do you have something?
I have some questions. I've asked this a couple times, and I haven't gotten a definitive answer, so I hope I do get it tonight. Closing Westbrook School will save the programs, correct? Barbara?
Programs. I think Westbrook's configuration lends itself to being able to bring in the Highlander Academy without our incurring a lot of construction costs. So I think that... These transition costs. And the other thing is that it's centrally located. There are classes that they take at the high school, so proximity is for the high school is good for the Highlander Academy program. But the Maple Road School is an elementary building. It looks like an elementary building. It's always functioned as an elementary building, where this one is a little bit more, almost like a middle school type of construction. You have a lot of flexibility with space because of the way it's made. So that's basically why Westbrook School seems to be the most feasible. And as far as programs go, I think it's going to be more beneficial because you won't, you're going to have a natural progression with your population, and the decrease in population, there's going to be changes, where I think that... We do it. When we implemented the social workers a number of years ago, right, Mr. Foodie? We started with three for six building, and, well, we started with three, one and a half for three building, the sixth building, and then we expanded it to three. So now we have a shared social worker between two buildings. But initially, there was only, they were only one and a half people.
What I'm asking is, is closing Westbrook School going to see if this district, is it going to be enough? That's what I'm asking.
In what way?
Well, you keep getting cut, son, punting, and I'm just, want you to say that, yes, this is going to be enough.
Probably not. There's probably going to be other areas that we're going to have to trim. But again, it's going to be with the population.
Thank you. I also want to know when exactly we are going to start with a definitive plan, Mr. Novak. You said to Mrs. Dwyer that there is no definitive plan of when we're starting, but there's a lot of layers. When is this starting?
I think that starts with the final nation of the...
So if we vote by the end of 2022, we can start at that point. So that's why our...
Once the vote comes through, then you can start.
I mean, so... Once it's official, then yes. So that gives us, the idea was not to do this, excuse me, the idea was to do this slowly. From April 22 to September 23 is about a year and a half. So it's about maybe three-quarters of a year of planning and meeting and discussing, and then bring it to a vote, and then I still, we still have from January through, you know, really June to iron out all the details. The staffing stuff is the moving target because we may have a plan to move this person from Westbrook to Maple Road, and then in March, they say, I'm actually retiring this June, so that, that changes things in the roadmap. So that's always a little bit of a moving target. But the sooner we let people know, the better. So for this neighborhood that gets rezoned from Westbrook to Maple Road, the sooner parents know, the better.
How many students do you think... Probably have a percentage, so I don't know, but is there an amount? Are we talking 10%? Are we talking 30%?
All of Westbrook, so that's one-sixth, roughly.
Well, Westbrook, right.
But then there may be some other students in other schools from all around. So if you start with just Westbrook, that's one sixth of the elementary students.
But I wonder how many others are going to be up there.
Well, we're waiting to hear back from Dr. Heber. So he's going to prove to do that.
You're going to have to move kids from other schools in order to make room for the Westbrook students. But it depends on how many students are in the student population at that time and which building they're going to.
So it makes me think that there's going to be, you know, more than one sixth, obviously, of students who are going to move. So Barbara, you said that the impact, we hope, is not felt by the student body. But it is going to be felt by the student body. It's going to be felt by all of Westbrook as well as other students. Closing a school is going to impact the whole entire community. So we were talking about academic programs. What you said was the impact is not going to be felt by the student body.
Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Novak, update on the new school year.
All right. Thank you. I just want to, you know, talk, it's our first meeting since students have returned. We've been out and about in the hallways and seeing, you know, everyone happy to be back and really getting off to a great start. We had a couple, we had a small hiccup with the storm that led to internet outage for our first two days. It was very interesting to see how our staff managed in that, in that situation. You don't realize how many, I know we all know at home when, you know, the kids can't get on the iPad or you can't watch the Yankee game or whatever without the internet now. But in the classroom, our teachers rely on the internet for attendance, for their Google classrooms, for so many, their class lists on the first day of school, their rosters are in that system. Just to see how everyone came together and made those first two days great for our kids in light of On September 21, we celebrated Panneos for Peace, which is, goes along with the International Day of Peace. Here in West Milford for probably since around, I think, 2000, probably 2009 was when we began. Each school celebrates this activity. It's run by our art department. They do, they do a great job getting everyone moving and interacting in the first days of school. Our, I compared notes with Gabriella just so I wasn't going to repeat a lot of the things that she said. But I wanted to mention, you know, Start Strong Assessment is currently in place. That is the beginning of the year assessment that is provided by the, provided by the state of New Jersey. We're already in the process of looking at, those results come back instantly. So students who, the they were able to do. Working with our staff to give them that access so that they also can see how this comes, how this works and how they can get that access as soon, as soon as they can. The, just to wish, I believe over the, it was over the summer when we met. One of the goals that is on our district goals for the year has to do with the math program. We talked about training. We talked about replacement materials. We talked about materials for in the classroom, not just textbooks, et cetera. So I just want to give an update on where we're going with that. We're off to a good start. We have a number of programs already scheduled to come in and talk to, talk to a group of our teachers and administrators to present new materials for grades K through five. We have also started the Cockroft Math Training that we talked about with the Cockroft Math Program. That's out of the Quonix. We've had probably six different grade levels go out already this year to participate in those trainings. The feedback has been, the feedback has been tremendous. I'm working on a letter to the community to talk about our math training. One of the things I'm going to highlight is that if you find maybe, you know, about five or six days a year, it's, it is because of the training that we're sending them to. And it's been, it's been tremendous. We've had feedback from the parents of kids in grades three and four. Last year, some of the things that they saw from the training. So we're off to a good start with that. Also wanted to announce the, last year was the first time our students took the NJSLA, which is the New Jersey Assessment for Student Learning Standards. That's the first time we've had it since before, before the pandemic. Those parent reports will be coming out on October 3rd. You're going to expect it, it's going to go home with, with the student in the backpack and envelope. We're going to do an announcement at the end of this week and then we're going to, I'm going to do a district announcement. Individual schools will announce it also on the day that they go home, just so parents can be ready to see these, see these results. It's being held on October 6th. There is a district message coming out soon. This highlights many of the programs targeted for students in grades five through eight. You know, kids who are, you know, going into our high school or, you know, maybe considering other options. We want to make sure that everyone's quite well aware of all the great things that West Milford, West Milford has to offer. There's prizes and giveaways and all that kind of stuff. I think there's a food voucher, pizza, pizza gift certificate from Macabre Pizza for the first hundred people who register. So if you haven't registered yet, make sure that you, make sure you do October, it's on October 6th. Gabriella also mentioned our first band competition. That was a tremendous, it's a tremendous moment. And if you didn't get a chance to be there, you know, it was really, I guess, the culmination of I guess, you know, Barbara, you can jump in. How many years you've been working on the complex, the, this, the field, the stands. Just great detail oriented event that I feel like only the West Milford marching band can pull off. So I know the feedback that they got from the guests at the event or the judges or the organization who runs the event, they were just blown away by, you know, how well West Milford pulled it off for the first time. So, you know, not only was it a great event for the band, it was a great event for West Milford because it showed off all those facilities that had been upgraded over the years. And the pandemic limited our ability to showcase those, those things. So to see it all in one place was really great. And the last one is more of a placeholder. It's a very important night. We haven't had it in the district since, I think, 2018. You know what I'm, you know where I'm going. Am I stealing your thunder for later? Okay. We are going to be offering a program called Hidden in Plain Sight. The tentative date is November 30th. And I'm working with the municipal alliance and our grant opportunities to see if we can provide dinner for families and attendants. In years past, when we've, we've had this event, if you're not, not sure what the event is, Hidden in Plain Sight is a, it's geared for districts for parents to come and see. You know, it's a replica of a teenager's bedroom and it shows where all the places that something could be found that you, you know, that you'd want to find, you know, in a, in that type of environment. So it's a, it's a great presentation. There's been times in the past when we've had five people visit after all the planning to set it up. And then there's been times when we've had over a hundred. So the time we had over a hundred is when we provided food. So that's what we're going to try and do. So we're going to, we're going to try and time food with the event to try and get as many people to it as we can. Right now, the tentative date is the 30th. We're just still waiting for confirmation from the organization. But we're happy to, we're happy to bring them back.
Missed something, but I went through the, the agenda and I didn't see this. There were summer committees this summer and there was supposed to be a summer committee on homework. And I just wanted to know what the result of that was because I know there was a question about homework not being given in some of the elementary grades.
Yeah, I've answered this question many times. There is no process in place that says there's no homework. We, and I don't remember, there was, I don't think there was a homework committee approved on the, on the summer committees.
We did approve one for summer committee.
No, there wasn't, there wasn't one that, there wasn't one that I had approved or one that I participated in. The homework conversation comes up. You know, during the pandemic, you know, the hybrid year, there was a, I guess, the less homework being given for a variety of reasons. When we met prior to the 21, 22 we were looking to re-return an organized process for homework that was consistent across all the buildings. So that's always been very to the community to know what's going on. Reading has been, independent reading is an expectation for all students. Yeah. So reading is expected for all students in grades K through five. Math practice is also expected for all students in grades K through five. And in grades four and five, there's a discussion of study skills and what that, what that looks like. How do you get a child ready for the middle school? Study skills could mean anything from a long-term project or a, you know, research, bring in research on a, on a famous explorer or that, or that type of thing. So those are the discussions that we've had that have been shared at grade level meetings. So we said K through five, reading, K through five, math, K through five, grades four and five, introduction to study skills.
We maybe love to see some homework free nights, like on a homecoming dance night for the high school or just random nights. Maybe we can write a policy about homework.
You can put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I thought we did have policies about homework free nights.
We have family days that we implemented probably four or five years ago.
I'd love for them to be coordinated with the events that are happening at the schools. You know, if there's a homecoming dance, just get sure to have homework.
Agreed.
Special reports, Mrs. Francisco?
Yes, you have the board minutes from August 3rd where you had Kathy Helala come in to do the goals. August 23rd workshop and regular reading and August 23rd executive session.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to August 3rd from a special meeting, August 23rd workshop, regular meeting, and August 23rd executive session.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? President's report, I don't have anything tonight. I think I gave my last report. We'll move right to public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes. Then, time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period has transpired. All members of the public speaking during the public comment here are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and to give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their name and address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming, coming with if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Are discouraged and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comment made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in the light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comment. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Has anyone signed up for public comment? Ms. Morrison?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes. May I speak? My name is Dr. Mark Segough, spelled G-O-U-G-H. And I am currently a resident of West Milford. I live I am here today to bring information to the board that will hopefully postpone your decision to close Westbrook School and to relocate the Highlander Academy. COVID has changed our day-to-day lives and made us all reconsider what's important. These truly have been unprecedented times. There has been over 2,100 homes that have sold in West Milford in the last 36 months. When you search for homes, including single-family, multifamily, apartments, condos, there are a total of 49 homes that are available for sale. That's it. There is nothing left. Since the pandemic has started, people, families are desperate, desperate to find a home in our town. I received valuable information from a real estate attorney who lives in our town that said there has been a huge shift in our market since early 2020. This odd shift includes bidding wars, cash offers, early retirement, and empty nesters selling to young families. Earlier as they are getting top dollar with their homes. This source has been a huge amount, has seen a huge amount of shit, sales in one area. And guess what? That zone goes to Westbrook. There are little to no listings available. That is a huge area to have to be districted. The population may not increase because of the Highlands Act, as been stated by Dr. Heber. But the demographic is certainly changing and that's why it would be considered. I have to add where I have personally seen in the local daycares. Both of my children have attended daycare since they were very small. These daycares have also seen a big shift since the start of the pandemic. After everything being shut down or modified for so long, parents want to send their kids back to school for more reasons than one. Just in our daycare alone, they had to put up two temporary rooms in the auditorium to accommodate the influx of toddlers. Where do these two to three-year-olds have to go into three years' time? In our After listening through the demographics presentation on the August meeting, it appears that we are projecting a decrease in enrollment. But basing it off the difference between the 2016 and 17 year and 2021 school years, percent difference in the school district overall. I believe that projection needs to be recalculated again based off of our changing population. And this is something I don't have written down, but from what I read And this is something I don't have written down, but from what I read, it looked like the mean age was about 45 years old. And I also agree that that is going to be changed, because a lot of those empty nesters have left, and people such as myself have moved into this town. Before you make your final decision, I beg you to consider how the census in our town has changed since 2020. I remember those people knocking on my door in March 2020, telling me to knock on my door. It was like, "Max, everybody, COVID going on." And to consult with the local daycares with their current enrollment. I know the census is conducted every 10 years, and there has to be a shift in the number of young families that now live in this town compared to 2019. I can attest to that, and so many of the other parents that I are close with, that I am close with. Areas like UGL are seeing permanent residents rather than summer travel, as it is a more desirable place to live. The other elementary schools simply will not be able to accommodate. And the new families that are coming in. I have met many parents with all the social activities, all the major extracurricular activities, all of these parents. When some of the technical schools outside of our town being held under fire, more families are looking to keep their children. They slim, and from what I can see from prior meetings. You may have traditionally seen a decrease in enrollment, but let's face it, because let's face it, my generation isn't having as many as children as years past. However, two things have happened during COVID. One of those big things is what we call the COVID baby group. These families decided that they wanted to have more privacy, more space to raise their family. That place is none other than our beautiful town. Our town that offers mass transportation, shopping centers, state parks, nearby malls, orchards, playgrounds, blower, and it is only a stone's throw away from New York City. There's a reason that so many young families are literally fighting over these homes.
I give up, the five minutes is the time.
Oh, it is? Okay, that's what the timer is?
Yeah, sorry.
I'm just going to give my thank you. I give you tremendous credit for evaluating this data. I understand your goal is to stabilize the district's financial, the finances, and then its cost-effective solution to the rising costs. As you have stated previously, you have found ways to come back from price. Change in New Year's to come. We would need more space and staff to accommodate a rising population and would ultimately have to reopen this, the public.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. James Hooty, the Hooper Shop material North Hooty in Jersey. You've got a decision to make, and for everything that I've read in the paper, I'm going to throw my two cents in, because this is something that I've thought about for a long time. Westbrook School is the school to close. It's our youngest elementary school. The capacity of this school, 508 students, you could easily close Maple Road and move all of the students from Maple Road here without disrupting anybody's lives. Easily. I don't know why something like that. Age 122 in the Lord of those reports. As far as closing, moving in Highlander Academy, again, this deals with our school capacities. A high school has a capacity of over 1,800 students, more than 900 range in students. Like Dr. Anamoyd said, we're almost cut in half. If we can't find room for 26 kids at the high school, or we have the capacity for 800 more students, something is seriously wrong. I don't know why you guys aren't thinking about this. You know, and when you close a school, Maple Road, you close it, at least in my book, that's what I would do. Jordan Transportation disappears. There's almost a million dollars there you save, because our own bus drivers can take over that route, because we hire Jordan Transportation just to cover actual school. So, in, in doing that, you, you save money. Kids together, kids from Westbrook, you know, to close this school and then spread them out through the district doesn't make sense. Maple Road School and moving them here keeps all those families together. And since our. Decreasing over time is what's been told to us by Ross Haber Associates. It only makes sense that that be the option that should be under consideration by the board. It, it doesn't make sense to close one school and spread all of these kids out amongst the district. Redistricting should be Westbrook and Maple Road becoming one. The money that we put into this school is, over the years, is tremendous. As far as Maple Road goes, I think you guys could easily sell that. And if it was me, I would sell it where you guys hold the paper. You guys beat a mortgage holder. And instead of selling it for $4 million, you get over $8 million for it. And whoever buys it, they can invest their money to upgrade it for it under their use. Now, my use, but I think it would be, it'd be something similar to what Milford Manor is. They'd probably be interested in buying it. Okay, I, I had, John brought a gentleman in who wanted to buy Hill Press and do something similar to that. The, the, the want for it and the need for it is there. I think you guys are making a, a big, a big decision, and I think, in my opinion, a big mistake, but that's your decision to make, and that's your decision to have, when you have that discussion. But I think that Maple Road would be the, the school to do. Keep this one and just combine the two schools, all students stay together. That, to me, is a much better option than splitting up one school and having it be a traumatic experience for, for the kids in this school. You, you keep them all together, just, it makes a lot of sense. And I, I would hope that you would at least consider that. I think that's an option that's much better than closing here. But that's not my decision to make anymore. That's your advice. Good luck.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is James Ingenito, spelled I-N-G-E-N-I-T-O. I live at 36 Cahill Cross Road in West Milford, New Jersey. Thank you for letting me speak tonight on behalf of everyone here. I actually have a daughter in Mrs. Yost's first grade class, and she's been here now attending Westbrook School for two years. Every day that she comes home, she cannot wait to tell daddy the amount and impact that Westbrook has put on her. I also have a young, another young daughter coming any day now that would love to have the same experience, come here and express that. With what I have heard in the community and whatnot, it seems like Westbrook is not the school to close, like everyone has been expressing tonight. I understand that there is a financial standpoint with this, but let's be honest, there's some, there could be other options available there. Going off of that, with the school buses, you know, coming from a family of educators in my hometown of Virtual Park, New Jersey, back in the early 90s to early 2000s, they closed down one elementary school for eight years, similar to what they were thinking about redistricting Westbrook for. And it took a hu-huge impact on the community. Once they opened that elementary school, it opened again. Not only did people realize that it drove apart friendships, it drove apart jobs and everything. My mother, being a kindergarten education teacher for many years, and also was very involved in the community herself on the education side and non-education side, she saw the impact with raising three kids in a small community. West Milford, we all know that this is a small, you know, a small-town appeal, and that's what we want. Also, with, you know, the COVID babies and everything that's been going on, including my baby due any day now, I would love to have the same experience for them. Westbrook School is not the school to close, in my opinion, and I believe that there can be so many different impacts in different ways. And Westbrook is not the school to close. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
My name is Tara Racano, R-A-C-A-N-O. I live at 116 Green Terrace Way in West Milford. I'm also here to speak about the repurposing or closing of a school. But I think when we talk about repurposing the school, it's important to realize the why. And if anybody's been paying attention the past couple years to the budget meetings, our district is in a dire financial situation, and we need to make cuts where we can in order to maintain the level of education that we've all come to love. This isn't used, and yes, it stinks, and nobody wants it to be their school. But the harsh reality is, if we don't do this, we risk our beloved district being taken over by the state. As elected officials, you need to take yourself out of the equation and do what's best for the district as a whole. Will repurposing a school be enough? No. Barbara's told us time and time again that we'll have to do other things, but it's a significant start, because what's the alternative when our district gets taken over by the state and we have no say in how it's going? We become candid. I don't want the district to face that fate, and I am the PTO president at Maple Road School, and while I don't speak tonight as an official member of the PTO, I can assure you that our school already has plans in place to make this transition a positive experience for the families we will be welcoming. I'm sure the other elementary schools do too. The entire district will be shaken up, and that's okay. It's not come to be the end of the world. We'll move on as a community stronger than ever in a district that can adequately and successfully send our children into the world well-prepared for their future, most importantly under our own control and not at the mercy of the state of New Jersey.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, make a motion to close. I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We need to adopt the agenda? Are there any papers to be done? Wow. So I need a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda is presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Education, Mrs. Dwyer. I'd like to move items one through 12 for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone have anything on the education? I do. I do. Under curriculum adoption versus history and social science, number three. I, I don't understand, I, I want an explanation of why this is a history and social science class and not a health class. Social, emotional learning, the good life.
You were, did you take a look at the curriculum that I shared at the Ed Committee?
I was not at the Ed Committee, and from your, and from your minutes, from the minutes, they said nothing to me.
Right.
And then I looked, I went to the website, I went to the website to look for the curriculum, and that website is impossible to use. It's so unfriendly. So, no, I just want an explanation. I don't want to be told what to do.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Oh, kind of wild. So, it's in the title, because it does go through the history of many of the psychologists and the, you know, the people who are, you know, behind some of the studies that are involved in this work. Connects to our social science.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll email you a PDF of the curriculum, so you can take that.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Orange and Rotland for the STEM classroom grant for upper green with Lake and Maple Road School of $675. I'm sure it works, because not every school has Orange and Rotland as their power.
Yes.
But thank you, that was very nice of you. Any other discussion under education? If not, roll call. Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Thank you. Personnel, student affairs. Debbie, you want to take that?
Sure.
Person. Okay. I need a motion?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to move items one through York Harbor and to my counsel before the, one through.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, under personnel student affairs.
Second. Discussion? Courtney?
I just would like to thank the teachers that are doing the sixth-period class for us. I think that that is admirable, because we are in a situation in the science department in the high school, they had to wait an extra week, because this meeting was postponed, and I just wanted to give a shout-out to them for doing the sixth-period and for waiting to get paid.
Are they doing the sixth-period?
They're on the agenda.
They're not teaching the period?
No, we're starting tomorrow.
They're not teaching it?
I know.
Yeah, no, I, it's, I think there's a, there's subs in there, right?
Tomorrow.
Yeah. I got something. One second, even worse. I'd like to thank Mr. Weedman for his years of service. I don't know if any of you know Bob Weedman, but his classroom was always open to any student who needed a safe harbor, who needed a little extra attention. He was there for them, and this is going to be quite a loss for our district. Thank you, Bob, for your years of service. Kate, did you have something?
No, it's okay, thank you.
I also want to thank Bob Weedman, because he's been like a picture in that hallway there, and I know how many kids, you know, just loved him, and the staff too. I, I, he's a great loss. I wish him well in his retirement, but he's going to be missed. I also wanted to mention and thank Dr. Anamoyd for creating that second section for UGL for the second grade. For those who don't know, the, the class that will be.
Well, thank you to the board for your support.
That's an area where I know that you identify as far as the class sizes. Any other comment? If not, roll call.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
abstain on 41, yes, everything else.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Abstain on 13 and 14, no on 29 and 30, and abstain on 35.
Yes, on the rest.
Yes, on the rest.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Operations and finance, Mr. Stillman.
Take notice and move one through four.
Second. Any discussion? If not, roll call. Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
No, I'm number two, yes on everything else.
Mr. Garino?
Oh.
Mrs. Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
No, I'm number two and yes on everything else.
Move number five?
Second. Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Abstain.
Move section 13?
Second. Discussion? If not, roll call. Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
One more. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I thought it was another policy. Mrs. Stevenson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve items one and two.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes. Yes.
Committees, parks and recreation.
Safety. Our first safety meeting will be for this school year is October 19th, right? So I'll have to report after the October meeting. Superintendent, I think.
So these are the minutes from September 22nd. There was discussion about restructuring and what would be using black and gold as colors in September 2023. While elementary schools should be transitioning to black and gold for school colors through this year. If schools are offering a spring spirit wear sale, it should be black and gold but can contain current elementary mascots. Mr. Novak is brainstorming ideas to make the change exciting for students and families. Suggested was Bucky, the high school mascot, visiting each elementary school and offering a black and gold shirt to elementary mascots to excite the student body about the switch. It was also suggested of involving West Milford TV Science to record them posts to the district YouTube so families are able to view the footage and carry the excitement through. As items in the schools need to be replaced, they will be replaced with black and gold during their regular replacement cycles. There was also a question about the timeline of restructuring, which was discussed obviously tonight. Linkit and NJSLA was discussed. Linkit was kind of explained a little bit. It's an educator's tool for standards. Benchmark B should correlate with NJSLA. This will be the first year to compare the scores and see if that is the case. Features are adjusted assignments based on the results of Linkit to better support their students. Second grade will take a phonics assessment in the late fall in place of the Linkit. Benchmark A, the bubble category students are on the edge of approaching and meeting expectation standards. And then there was discussion about when the NJSLA results will be coming and paper copies of results will be sent home with students on October 3rd. There was talk about chemistry and physics in the high school. The question was while admittance into college won't be affected by the lower credit offering for the class, classes required during college may be. What is the district looking to do to alleviate this for families? Mrs. Lambert from the West Milford High School, she's a counselor, joined via Google Meet, and she answered those questions. She said the credit change from six to five credits is due to the time the students are spending in the class. Colleges do not look at credits. Instead, the classes, and if the class was full year or half year course, it won't have any impact on admissions into college. And then the UGL second grade was discussed, which we know we've approved the second section tonight. There was also talk about the graduation parade. Can something be done to bring the graduation parade through town back with graduation being at the high school or turf? Maybe assemble at UGL and families can work their way down to graduation. Dr. Anamon said that he will speak with Mr. Strianz about potentially working out a parade this year. It was also discussed how the community enjoyed the parade and that the mayor also commented that it was missed. Foreign language, there was just some clarification about the fact that Italian is still the language set to be phased out over time. Current seventh grade students will be the final grade to have the option to select Italian as their foreign language. There was a question about sports physicals and whether they could be brought back to being provided by the district. That obviously goes into the budget planning. That's already underway for the 23, 24 school year and will be discussed. There was talk about the website, and it was explained that a part-time webmaster was going to be on the agenda tonight. And then also parent teacher conferences were discussed, and it was said that six through 12 will be virtual with parents having the option to request in person. And K through five will be in person with parents having the option to request virtual. And those were the minutes from Calistinsiano, the Wunta president.
Thank you. The state county school boards, there was a meeting on September 12th. The Clifton superintendent gave a presentation. Clifton just passed a $155 million referendum. And sort of that actually is being picked up by the state with the referent. It's the largest referendum that's ever been passed in the state. And some of it, honestly, we have done. A lot of it has to do with our security, the security cameras, the vestibules that we put in. But they did all, they have like, what did he say, 25 schools? And all were like over 75 years old. So they have, they had to update some of them. Also, there was a conversation amongst the representatives there from, you know, the boards about the difficulty in staffing, about getting science teachers and math teachers. Many are having the same difficulties as we are. The next meeting is November 14th. They will be present. Your county boards will be present at workshop in Atlanta City. Going into New Jersey school boards, I would just say that workshop is coming up October 24th through the 26th in Atlanta City. If you can get an opportunity to go, it's always been very rewarding. You can also do your training if you're due for any of your governance training. You can do that at workshop at this time. Legislative, Mrs. O'Brien?
I know I've said these legislative pieces before, but again, this has been brought up by the New Jersey School Board Association. PL 2022 requires any district with a high school to establish a threat assessment team by the 23, 24 school year. The New Jersey Department of Education is currently rolling out training to districts to help them navigate these requirements. Regarding academics and school climate, they noted that as a result of PL 2022, students in the class of 2023 are away from graduation assessment requirements. The New Jersey School Board Association stated that they, oh, that the NJ GPA that they took, not School Board Associations, I'm sorry, that they took in March of 2022 will be considered a field test. And they are not required to pass any of the alternative assessments, for example SAT, RACT, or to complete a portfolio assessment. As a result of HIB policy changes in PL 2021, districts must incorporate New Jersey Department of Education reporting forms, the HIB 338 forms into their HIB policies. There is one form for local education agency personnel and a separate form for reporting by families and caregivers. And the last thing I'd like to report is other bills that they reviewed included the Electric School Bus Grant Program, which is a $45 million, three-year grant program to help the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection determine reliability and cost effectiveness of replacing diesel-powered school buses with electric school buses. And temporary extension of school bus service, which extends for the 22, 23 school year only. The service length of school buses will one year.
Thank you. Technology, Mr. Guarino is not here tonight, but this phone system, all the phones are in there?
Up and running.
And the website, when is, when is the date of, when we think it's going to be?
Well, we approved, just approved the webmaster part-time. So that person and I will sit down and Mr. Winston to see what else needs to be added. So we're adding slowly. It's up and running. The beta is on our website. So if you go to our website, you can click on that. It's a very mobile-friendly link. And we just have to add more and more documents because we didn't transport every single document over from our old website to our new website. Some of the documents we found were, I think I mentioned, we have the 2015 February late trip, parent guides, what to pack, what not to pack. And we're going to need to transport that over to our new website. So we're adding what we need, and we have a way now to have documents sunset. So if you put something up tomorrow, you can say, have this basically delete off our website in 30 days or 60 days. We're on a particular date, so we don't have to go back in and take it down. But that's usually how it slips through, somebody forgets to take it down. So we have the ability to add a document tomorrow and have it disappear from our website on the day that we know that we need it. Maybe it's something about, I figure if you like a trip, it'll come down the day after the trip ends or something along those lines. So we hope to see some improvements very shortly. Thank you for the board for supporting that motion tonight. I think it's necessary to have the outside expert come in and give us a hand.
Another question. With the new phone system, are you going to provide a list of new extensions, please? Because I called today and I got, well, you know, put in your ham numbers. I don't know what it was.
I think there's going to be a directory.
Well, they'll go ahead and the board.
And it'll also be listed on the website?
It's going to be on the website.
Yeah, so we coordinated all the extensions so that they're the same for every listener.
They all go with the flag.
So the school, the principal extension will be the school code plus 50. The nurse will be the school code plus 40. And it's different, so there's a nurse in every building. You'll be able to, you know, once you know the school codes, you'll just be able to dial a school code and the extension and get to the school nurse, school principal. It may take a little while to get that, but we'll certainly post that with the board.
And will there be staff PD on the new technology for the phone systems?
Yes, we have a staff training on the second Monday in October, I believe. We're going to offer some to not everybody, but key people. Building secretaries.
Is the UGL number, has that been taken care of?
The UGL number still has not been forwarded yet. But what we're doing is we're forwarding that number to a temporary number for that.
Is there like a hopeful date that it's going to change?
Hopefully, yes. Alive and hopeful, I don't know. We're finding that these carriers are very difficult to deal with and hard to nail down as far as when they're going to be.
Okay. Township Board of Education, no meeting to set them out. Municipal Alliance, Mrs. Stevenson or Mrs. Romeo?
Actually, Mrs. Lockwood went first.
Oh, okay. Mrs. Lockwood.
So the West Milford Municipal Alliance met on Monday, September 12th. I went by Zoom. Discussed was the success of National Night Out, the Wellness Family Festival on Saturday, September 24th. The program, We're Not Buying It, for sixth graders. Bringing Back Hidden in Plain Sight and Knockout Opioid Abuse Day on October 6th. The next meeting is Monday, October 10th at 7:00 PM in the West Milford Library Conference Room. Meeting will be hybrid.
And then I guess, well, I guess I would like to just ask, how did your wellness festival go?
Extremely well. We had over 150 families show up. So we had it broken into various parts. We had outdoors activities for the little ones. We did adult activities such as yoga and meditation and Reiki, the energy healing, which was very, a lot of people did not know anything about that, which, you know, was an eye-opener for some. And then we had tables from a lot from the county, also Highlands Family Success Center, Association for Special Children Families, West Milford Municipal Alliance. And we had the Hope One Ban, which if you don't know anything about it, is a very interesting service through the county. They service entire county. They help people who are dealing with drugs and alcohol, but they also address mental health as well. And they have, it's a, people who walk the walk so they can talk the talk. And we had Mayor Dale show, some council people show, and a lot of, again, over 150 families show up. So it was a very, the weather was perfect, then it went downhill. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Me too.
Line dancer? That was line dancing.
Do you know, that's a good question. Yes, they did have line dancing. Let me put you this way, was I part of the line dancing? Nope. So I assume it was good. Thank you for asking.
Mrs. Lockwood? Special education.
Okay, so I have a summary statement provided by Caitlin Bauphob from the meeting that took place in August. Dr. McQuade started with a staff in update. There were questions regarding one-to-one aids and out-of-district transportation. We were all answered. Since the pandemic, we have seen an increase in preschool-age students requiring services. Due to this need, another developmental preschool class will be opened in the afternoon this year. Preschool offered a summer meet and greet on September 2nd for the youngest students to meet their teachers and visit their classrooms. This was a great start to their year. Unified PE is now being offered at Magapin and West Milford High School. Existing resources were utilized and unified grant funding will be forthcoming for expansion on this. This is being offered in addition to unified sports at the high school and the potential of expanding this through the grants. Ms. Caitlin Bauphob, the CPAC chairperson, will be hosting informal parent meetings before each CPAC meeting. Look out for links on Facebook and your email. If you would like to receive emails from CPAC or become a member of their Facebook page, please contact wmsepac@gmail.com. There was a discussion about an idea to create a program for students' mental health needs over the summer using grant money. Unfortunately, the grant had some fine print, and there was not enough time to amend the grant or plan for this. The money from the grant is still there, and ideas for after-school programs are in discussion. There was talk about making sure that the staff are taken care of and extra attention is provided to encourage them to stay in West Milford. Teacher burnout is a real thing, and the district is making efforts towards helping out the staff. The parents inquired about a plan for restraint and crisis training now that the trainers have left. Although some new staff may need to be sent out for training, the remainder of the staff should be good until mid-year. This will allow for a trainer to be secured. There was discussion about case managers, and I think everybody should have gotten their case manager assignments, who their case manager is now. At the time, obviously, those weren't given out. And then parents said that they sometimes feel out of the loop at IEP meetings. This topic was discussed, and a recommendation was made to send any concerns or questions ahead of time to your case manager. CPAC will be working together to create a toolkit for parents to help them during IEP meetings. And the next meeting is planned for October 12th at 7:00 PM. And I believe it's still going to be offered both live and via Zoom.
When was the date?
October 12th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Linda, I'm sorry, I missed, when was the last township and Board of Education joint committee meeting? Other than both who did it tonight? No, I wasn't sure. Did you have a report from a meeting that you were at?
No, it's been, it's been two months. I gave just those light updates last night.
Okay. I just have a question about all these meetings. I really was glad that when I couldn't attend my committee meeting and Courtney couldn't attend, that we found someone that could. And I know that there have been other meetings that people have either attended on their own when there's two or three people on there, you know, and I just don't think that people are being invited to fill in on committee meetings. And we talked.
Or give the report.
Or give the report and they're not here is also great, you know? And we've talked about it multiple times. If there are meetings and you can't go, if you could reach out to those of us that try to go.
Is this like your old business? Is that where we are?
Okay. Is that where you are?
Well, because we're going into old business, so I'm trying to make sure, figure out where we are. So that would be under old business, I guess?
All right.
Go ahead.
I think it has a valid point. And the other problem with the committee minutes, like even when I go and I look at the committee minutes, they're not, they're not complete. Education tells about who spoke, but there's no comments from board members. There's no concerns. It just, I think our committee minutes need to be more complete so that if people have questions, they can go look at the minutes and then call the chairperson or call the administrator who's at the meeting. So that's just my thought.
As far as the committee, we are calling for when somebody can't make committee or we must.
Oh, very happy with how that's going.
Oh, I'm very happy with how that's going. Thank you. That was not, I agree with what Terry's saying, that is not what I was mentioning tonight in Old Business. I'm talking about the specific committees in, under committee reports and liaisons. If you're a liaison to a committee, like how Claire just read our report and she's not on that, she covered for us, which I was super thankful, thank you.
Well, there are, there are a number of committees where have multiple, like with Mr. Marino last month, I, the month before, I covered technology because he called me. If I don't know, if we don't know somebody's not going.
No, look, I believe I heard you say at some point, whether it be today, another day, whatever, that you've attended these meetings with the town by yourself. So if three people are allowed to attend, please invite me to cover you or invite Claire or Courtney or Mike or Jay or someone else so that if there's three of us allowed to go, three of us can go.
They're at 9 o'clock in the morning.
Oh, well, I have to work, thank you.
And, and I'll be honest, that's why.
I still like to be invited, but I can't go. I may have a day off.
You want to take a day off for the meeting, you know?
Mike can go.
We could, we could possibly be around.
And Jay can go.
You know, Mike, Mike doesn't like me.
I didn't know what even what it was.
Did you call and can anybody cover for you? I thought parks are wrecked, you can't just cover because it's.
But you can still.
I think we try to meet everyone's needs. And at 9 o'clock in the morning, I don't think, and a lot of times I don't know if somebody's coming, especially that particular meeting, until that morning. So I could call you if you want.
But I know Mike and Claire sometimes meet 9:00 AM, so.
I could, I could call you all at 9 o'clock if you want me to.
Some of us can do it, some of us can't, right?
It's just professional. Some would like to and some of us don't want to.
Fair enough, yeah.
Okay, let's pull.
And some of us can't and would love to.
I can, but do I want to? Yeah, that's a different story.
Anything else under Old Business?
I have other things. I don't know if they fall under older now, so if you'd rather me save it for new?
Sure, mine do.
I'll make a motion to close Old Business.
And I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Go ahead, new business.
My first new business is can Winston or someone please come to the committees and help us get onto the Board of Ed duties?
Thank you. I can't get on mine, does anybody?
I can, I can.
I'm upset about it, I'm frustrated, and I'm very good with technology. I'm not a, I'm not a technology idiot. I can't figure this out. And I bring my own computer. If we could please, if somebody can come to committees and help us in small groups. Claire is the only one on the whole board that can do it, so there's some magic about your computer because I tried.
We've arranged.
I can't do it on my phone. Just a minute. Do you try to go on your phone?
No, I don't use my phone.
I can't get it on my phone. Can you get it on? Not even on your computer?
I can get it on the phone, but it's not the way it is on the computer. There's three dots.
If she's there.
There's three dots and it says option, and then where it says option, then it brings in the login, which is. Yeah, we could just spend time on that.
Has anybody logged on?
I can't get on.
I can log on, I just logged on yesterday.
Maybe, 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 maybe Mr. Winston can come to the committee meetings this month and show us how we can log into our website. Is there anything else under that?
Yes, I have one question. When did we stop doing sports physicals?
I think that was during the pandemic. We used to do it here and during the pandemic, the doctors' offices weren't going out to schools. So parents have been, since then, parents have been going to their own pediatrician for a physical for sports. And we know it's a lot easier when you're hosted here, so it's something we're looking to bring back for this coming summer for the next school year for athletics.
So in the past, isn't it something that was done for each season, that our school doctor would come?
I think it was once, I think it was once a year.
Three times a year. And for each beginning of the sports season, they would come. It was, like I said, either our school doctor or a doctor that we hired to do sports physicals. And the line would normally go down the hallway and out the door. So you're saying that since COVID, we haven't had that for our students?
I think we did it twice. I don't think we did it three times. I think it was the full season, spring.
So since then, families have been going out to do all pediatrician, which presents another problem because not every health plan, you know, sometimes you only get one physical a year, where your health, you know, plan for free, so it's a little bit of a inconvenience.
So that's something we're looking to bring back.
The budget for, for this coming school year as a convenience for parents, not that everybody can make it that day, but a majority, we're anticipating a majority of families.
I mean, it should be instituted this school year, you're saying? Yes? It's never had a budget line. It's never been a, like, I never took it, I never saw it being taken out of the budget. So we're doing it this school year, is what you're saying? You're looking to set it up for this school year?
We're looking to do it for this coming school year, next school year.
Okay, I'm not, that's something we can talk more about, but as far as budget conversations go, school physicals was never on the topic block.
We did not, we did not cut it.
That's what I'm saying.
What happened was the doctors did not come.
Now not like affecting us as much. It was never cut. It should be instituted this school year, is what I would think.
We'll reach out to the school physician.
Medical examiner is in the budget.
It's, it's there, it's not cut out.
Yeah.
It's getting, it's getting, it's getting the physician to do the physical because even as I'm sure your experience, everybody's experience with their doctors, I mean pediatricians now, they have no night hours. So like, you know, I know different people, so like, the doctors are kind of changing some of that. So I mean, we have a school doctor, correct?
We have a medical examiner as we're required to by law.
That used to happen in the past, but I'm pretty sure it's closer now. Any other new business?
I have something, but it's only a question. It's come to my attention that there's a website called Niche, N-I-C-H-E dot com, and it has listed our district, it has given us a very, very poor rating. And I, what do you do about that? And I. And I. N-I-C-H-E. This is the same thing, I mean, it's every number where we are. What do you do about it? You come up with your own school formula. You offer every AP class, you pay for every kid to take every AP exam. Look at what they're grading. Look at what they're looking at. I don't know, I just, I didn't see it, I just heard about it and I was told that our rating is out of 250 four schools. We were like 252 or 250 and I don't, I don't understand why we're that low.
I'm not, I'm not playing with the formula they use, but that's going to have to look like.
Yeah, because it's not good for real estate or anything else. Okay, thank you.
Any other new business?
I have something. I'd like us to discuss rescheduling board minutes, board meetings, sorry. I know during COVID and the aftermath, there were lots of times when we were sick, the four of us couldn't attend and we would have to reschedule because of sickness or because somebody had a work meeting and we couldn't get everyone here. I'd like to say that we are a governing body and you know, one vote is more important than another. With us delaying this meeting a week, I thought the teachers weren't getting paid, but actually the students had a sub since the beginning of September, you clarified, and that makes me upset. I think that it's unprofessional for us to be pushing a board meeting back because of one or two board members not being able to attend. I know we all want to be here, but we get the board meetings in January, correct Dallas? So we need to plan accordingly our vacations and things that come up. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Any other new business?
I have one last question on your new business. And I'm not sure who can answer this one, but when a grievance occurs, does the Board of Ed Grievance Committee see the actual written grievance?
Well, there is no grievance committee. There's a, there's a grievance process.
We don't have a grievance committee. We have the board, either the full board appears a grievance or a committee of the full board will hear it. I can't say for certain, now that I think about it, whether the board's subcommittee sees all the grievance documents. They may not, but they're certainly discussed.
Thank you.
Anything else under new business?
I got a few lines.
I'm saying West River High School.
It's the whole discipline.
257.
I need a motion to close new business.
Motion to close new business, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public having a legitimate interest in the action of the board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the West Milford Public School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes. Then, time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that the members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comment made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in the light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comment. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak? Not moved. Yep. This one's one. Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you need a motion for executive session?
At 9:58 PM, I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable and we will dismiss from the executive session. I shouldn't take more than 30 minutes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we just, the nine, plus the board members.
I know, I.